To get our meeting started, welcome everybody. And I would ask that everybody keep silent or turn off your cell phones during this meeting. And we are here for the ZBA meeting of Tuesday, July 19th, 6:30 PM. Roll call, we have Mr. White, Mr. Thompson, myself, Mrs. Honay, and Mr. Bush. Representing staff, we have Mr. Jeremy Smith, and we have Mr. Laddie as our township attorney. And Mr. Bush, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, this is approval of the agenda. Do we have any adds or subtracts, Mr. Smith?
No.
Your motion for approval of the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. White, support by?
I support.
Mr. Thompson. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those with the same sign, motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve minutes as presented by Mr. White, support by?
Support that too.
Mr. Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Those would be for the June 21st, 2022 minutes. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. So this is for anybody that would like to address the ZBA board, typically having nothing to do with either one of the cases that we have before us. So seeing nobody else besides the two cases that are here, I will close that public comment. Are there any other correspondence other than what you just handed out as far as having to do with this first case?
No.
Okay. No correspondence. We get into old business, which is ZBA 22004, it's a public hearing at 7530 Paradise Drive. The applicant is Mr. Kerry Horton, and they are seeking a variance. The applicant has erected a swimming pool six feet from the property line where 15 feet is required. We did hear this case last month, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Laddie to kind of give us an update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You did hear this case last month, and when you heard it, the applicants weren't present, and you reviewed the information submitted by the applicant and also a report by Mr. Smith, and you rendered a decision at that time. And what happened shortly after the meeting was that the applicants appeared, and they had been led to believe that the time for the meeting was actually 7 o'clock instead of 6:30. And so they asked Mr. Smith if they could have the case reconsidered. And what you have tonight is this matter back up, it's been re-noticed pursuant to the ordinance. And what you have is an interesting situation because normally you won't, because you're a review body or an appeal body, you normally don't review your own decisions unless there's been some material mistake of fact or some information or facts that you did not have in your decision. And so what I think would be best tonight, I see the applicants are here and they're represented by Attorney Milhouse, and also Mr. Milhouse has provided some information to you tonight, although you're probably not going to be able to get to it at this moment. But I think what we should do is open up, open up at least the public hearing portion of this case to allow you to hear Mr. Milhouse's presentation. And then at that point in time, you should decide whether or not there was a material mistake of fact or whether they were facts and circumstances that you didn't have a chance to consider that the applicants present, and then make a decision as to whether or not you feel you want to reopen the case and reconsider your decision. If you do reopen the case, your options are to affirm what you did, to modify what you did, or to reverse what you did. And so I think in the interest of fairness, we should let the applicants make their presentation to you, again, in the context of the open hearing, and then you make the decision whether or not you want to reopen the case or not.
But it is within our means to deny to reopen the case based on possibly not hearing any additional information.
That's correct. If there aren't any material facts that you find that you weren't aware of at that time, and you're within your rights to not reopen your decision.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, and then, Mr. Milhouse, would you like to come in and you'll have to state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Attorney Harold Milhouse, 2361 Village Woods Drive, Grand Blank, Michigan, 48439. And as indicated, I'm the attorney representing the Hortons. And it's my understanding that because of the time mix-up or misunderstanding, they were not even allowed or had the opportunity to present any side or even request a variance. So here we are today. And with that being said, that the whole request is presented to you all, and I know you don't have time to read it, but the meat of that brief along with those exhibits indicates that Mr. Horton, they put up a above-ground swimming pool. His ignorance or lack of knowledge that he needed to request a permit first before doing it caused him to totally assemble this pool. And subsequently, a neighbor filed a complaint because it was in violation. And at that time, Mr. Horton or the Hortons had a conversation with the neighbor to discuss the issue. They cleared that issue. And after they cleared the issue, he was okay with the pool being there. But that does not mean that he didn't need to seek and get the proper variance so that he could be proper and legal. And that's what he did. And based on that, we checked with FOIA to determine, has this been done before? This isn't the first time that a pool has been erected and variances have been issued. A variance is just, as you know, to allow an exception for something like this to take place. And this is what happened with them. They meant no harm. As a matter of fact, not only that, but as you will note in your time to review the documents, that Mrs. Horton, this pool will serve as therapy for her as well. But this is something that they erected in their backyard. That is the only place that it would fit that made sense so that it would not risk the chance of breaking, busting, falling apart due to the unlevelness or due to it being on a hill or the bumps or whatever. That was the flattest area in their backyard to put this. And it just happens to be within five feet of the violation. And if the purpose is for, well, the variance is, you have your reasons and we understand that. But if the neighbors are okay with it, and yes, mind you, he did erect it, put it up without first going through the proper channels. Now that's what we're trying to do. We asking for your permission to allow for a variance so that he does not incur thousands of dollars unnecessarily in order to take it down. And he could very well put it up somewhere else. But as we indicated, if part of the concern is for what happens if it breaks, then it's more or it's less likely to break here than if he put it in another place that was unlevel or rocky or bumpy. And we're just asking that you reconsider if you made a decision last week without him speaking. We are now speaking, and I would employ that you read the brief first, read the argument first, take it in consideration, and then make your decision. And based on what has been presented, I think that you will see that a variance is warranted.
Because this is a public hearing, does anybody else want to speak in this matter? I would advise to limit comments to three minutes or less. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, having heard that, I will close the public hearing. Unfortunately, I guess, we do, we just received this information tonight. It would have been helpful, I guess, to be able to get this ahead of time so that we can properly go through it. I guess it's up to my fellow board members if there's any additional questions or comments that you have at this time.
I'll ask the first one if you want. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm trying to get through the packet we just got. I'm getting through a couple of these. There's addendum four, addendum five, addendum two, just off the top of my head. And you were a member of the board at the time. So I guess I'm going to kind of ask you a couple of questions, Ms. Chairman. We have several pools that were granted variances. And I'll mind you, 2008's quite a long time ago, a couple in 2018. Like I said, I haven't really got through every piece of paper. Do you remember any of those meetings, reasons why that the variances were granted? Because it looks like most of them were granted. So I'm just, you were a member of that team, so I thought it might be pertinent.
I do remember the more recent one, I guess, and again, I have not had a chance to kind of refresh my memory on this. One of them, I believe, had to do with the fencing to be able to provide enough clearance for the fencing around the pool. And in that case, we approved it. Again, I couldn't tell you other than to try to have time to go through all of this. So I guess where we are with this now, you know, based on what Mr. Laddie said, is that we denied it last time. We had very little to no communication up here at the board, and there was nobody here at all attending the meeting to involve in a public hearing. So based on this information, Mr. Laddie said, we have a couple of options. First of all, do we think that there might be enough information presented this evening in this packet to warrant to reopen this case? So I guess that's the first question. If there is, then are we prepared to act upon it tonight? Or is that something that we actually want to, we want a table in order to give us an opportunity to look through this? So the first question is, do we think that there might be enough information to warrant reopening this case? I said, unfortunately, it would be nice to have this information way ahead of time, but we had time to absorb it and to really get into it. And I believe, speaking for the rest of the board, the reason, the main reason that it was denied was because there was a building permit pulled. So the knowledge of knowing that you have to have a permit in order to put this up was there, but you just didn't wait for the actual review and permit to be issued. So I think based on that, last month, the board just felt that it was a pure situation of not following the rules, even though you knew that the rules existed, so.
Well, I guess, kind of adding on to that potentially, I mean, there's a basketball court, a fence, a shed. Do all those require a permit or a blessing from the township?
The shed, yes, the basketball court, no.
No. It looks real, is it a back, I haven't been there, but it looks, I mean, there's a flat enough for a basketball court, it's flat enough for a shed, it's flat enough for a pool. It seems pretty flat backyard. Is that, am I, am I not seeing that from the aerial shots I've got from my original packet from last month?
It's not, who we should pick, the rest of the area of the backyard.
Okay.
There are areas that are not as flat. Those are the flat as cars there.
Okay.
And the basketball court was directed first.
Okay.
And then just here, basketball court, then the fence, and then the shed. The shed, we had the shed, we had to level that part over there, it cost a lot of money.
Oh, you had to grade it.
Yeah, grade it. Everything that's there had to be completely graded.
Okay.
And we spent a lot of money on grading.
You've done a lot of work back there.
Yes, and we do have some pictures of that area of Mr. Thompson's that we can not break out.
That's from our packet from last month.
Correct.
They were in there. That's, yeah, color ones.
So the first issue.
Thank you. I guess, to what you were just going to go to, I was not here, obviously I'm an alternate, so I'm here when someone's not going to be here, and I was not required to be here last month. So to your first question, should we reopen this? I guess I haven't heard it yet. I did get the packet last month and was very familiar with the case, even though I wasn't here. The three of you were. So I guess to warrant opening it up, I'd like to hear your opinion of the people that actually made the decision last month.
Well, I know, I mean, I think there was.
There really wasn't a lot of discussion of me being on.
Because we had a mix-up with the timing, and we apologize for that. I'm sorry we missed you, because we prefer to have the applicants here. However, we do see a lot of cases that there are no-shows. So we didn't know what to do. We took action and saw it was fit. Because it was a violation, it was, I don't know, what is, he was.
Madam Chair.
It wasn't, it was not, building print was reviewed, and it's not self-created.
A lot of the information that we just provided tonight was already in your packets from last month and in this month's packet. A lot of the FOIA information was already in there. So you've, this will be the third set of that that you've already seen. There's some new pieces of information in that from Mr. Milhouse, but the majority of it is the FOIA information that you've already seen, would be the second time now.
Thank you. Well, and just like last month, it puts us in a very difficult position because we don't want somebody to have to go in, tear it out what they've already done. However, there are rules and laws in place for specific reasons, and this is clearly one of them. This is why we go through these processes. So I guess, Mr. White, do you have any additional comments as somebody that had denied it last month?
Was there consensus among the board to reopen the case or not?
I personally don't think that we need to reopen it. I think the facts are still there, that the permit was pulled, it was waiting to be reviewed, waiting to be approved, and all of this would have been caught in that process. I'm not sure what additional information could be presented that is going to change those facts. The only other way that we can look at this is to actually ignore that part of the process and just say, okay, what about looking at the variance request specifically? And go beyond the fact that it was done illegally.
Well, Madam Chair, I think as I reviewed the minutes of the meeting, there was discussion on the record about the fact that this was self-created. And I think that the feeling was, and I think it relates perhaps to what you were talking about as far as the positioning of the pool, but the fact that there was a permit taken out and that it was placed in a location that violated the setback. And so I think, and then the applicants tonight said that it had to be located there because of the grade. There was a comment from one of the ZBA members that there are a number of other improvements to the backyard, including a shed and a basketball court, and that it, I'm gathering again by the minutes that the placement of all these items and the fact that this item was placed within the setback is a situation that they created themselves. It's not a condition of the property. Mr. Milhouse raised the point that the grade is best at this location. But I don't know if that's, I don't know if that rises to the level, first of all, of practical difficulty or if that overcomes your feeling, at least last month, that the situation is the location of the pool, that it's not self-created. And so that's my recollection of your discussion last month. And again, you did have, you had all the information that the applicants presented, and they present a number of different examples of variances for pools that were within the setback. But you're, as you're aware, your situation isn't to necessarily reconcile every different individual piece of property. Your charge is to look at this piece of property and decide if it beats all of those five criteria required to have a variance. And I'm not putting myself in your position, I'm just telling you that procedurally, that's how we got ourselves here.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, we have certain standards that we have to go by in considering a variance request. One of them, practical difficulty, another one, unique situation, that it's not self-created, substantial justice, minimum variance necessary, and compliance with other laws. So that is typically what we use as a guide to determine variance request on an individual basis. So what is the feeling on reopening this case? Do we need a motion?
A motion would be the best.
Do we have to, does the original from last month, does the original motion maker have to make it? Or is it just whoever's here tonight?
Correct.
It was Eaton, wasn't it? Doesn't really matter now.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To Ryan, do you have an opinion? I mean, I'm hearing from the chair, she says not to open it, and she was here last month. I haven't heard from the other two.
I was here. It's a tough one. We've looked, I mean, the other cases, I haven't gone through them all, and the other exhibits. But each one is unique, every property is unique. Some back up to state-owned property or golf course or something else that there's not a neighbor behind them or whatever. So we look at them uniquely, I guess. And I think that the ZBA board at that time, at last month, felt that it was a violation, and we turned it down. I don't know if anything, I have not, unfortunately, I've kind of tried to thumb through it as fast as I can, but I have not gone through that big packet we just got. I want to make an educated decision on it, but I don't think, I don't know if anything's new or shocking or different than the nine feet or whatever we're talking about. Right, because we're going from 15 down to six? Is that nine feet?
Well, I guess I would make a motion to not reopen the case and stand by the decision that we made last month, based on the same issues that we had last month. So there's a motion on the table. Does anybody second? And then we can have some additional discussion if you'd like.
I'll second it, just let me get along.
Okay. So a motion by Honay, second by White. Any additional conversation then, discussion on it?
My only, I would vote to reopen, but based on what I'm seeing, I would also then vote to deny, just some sort of, I understand that they weren't here, so I would reopen just because of, they didn't have that opportunity. I know it sounds sort of, maybe that's what the lawyer would be, but that's how I would do it. Because I haven't seen anything. And I also, at least me thumbing through these FOIA requests, these were, as far as I could tell, construction, the requests were variance pre-construction, so I think they are some significant difference.
Madam Chair, the other option you have is if you want to postpone this decision, you're free to do that as well. So if you feel like you need more time to review what was submitted, you can do that.
We have a motion on the table. Should I take a vote and then?
You have a motion.
Yeah, well, I guess that's, I'm struggling with Mr. White, the same thing. I feel that they, right, they deserve their due process or whatever to present. And again, I don't see anything that's super drastic, changing our decision, you know? Do I delay it a month?
Well, if you delayed it, by the way, you'd be delaying it two months because I don't think we have a meeting scheduled for next month. But, but yeah, if you, I mean, if you feel like you want to have more time to go through what was submitted at the hearing date, in addition to what was submitted in the application, you can certainly take that time to do that. And so if you did, if you were inclined to do that as a board, you would vote down the motion to not reopen, and then there would be a subsequent motion to adjourn this matter to a subsequent date.
Okay, well, I made a motion to deny to reopen and to stay with the decision that we had last month. So I will take a vote at this point. So a yes vote would be to maintain the decision from last one.
Correct.
All right, Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Honay, yes? Mr. Bush?
No.
All right, now we have a tie.
Yep. So that, so you're back to, you're right back to square one. So if there's another motion coming.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we need that fifth person here, which we don't have today. Well, that could be too. I mean, you could, you know, again, you're, an additional member would perhaps help you with your deliberations. If you are, again, if you're inclined to do that, then obviously give yourself some time to reconsider it and hold it at a later meeting.
Would someone like to make a motion then to table?
I'll make the motion to table to the next meeting.
Would you consider the next meeting to be September?
You're here by yourself if you do it in August.
Mr. White, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if he was.
Yeah, no, so.
Mr. Laddie cannot be here at the August meeting?
The status quo, it would just stay status quo until the next meeting, so.
Correct. And I think the pool's in, it's in place, right? And it's.
It's in place, but it's not open.
Oh, okay, okay.
Appreciate that. All right, so Mr. White made a motion to table this issue until the next meeting, which will be in September. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support. Mr. Thompson? All right, all those.
Comments?
Yes, Mr. Bush?
All right, so I have a pool. Mine's very large, 33-foot above-ground pool, 20 feet from the lot line. I had to dig in and consider amount into the ground for grading because, like, you know, the land's, no land's flat. So if we're going to table this till September, open your pool and enjoy it the rest of the summer because pools will be closed by then. So you might as well just table it till next spring. So that's my only comments. If we're going to table it today, enjoy your pool for the rest of the year.
What's that, second?
I think it's going to be, I don't want to say the date, but I think it's going to be end of the September meeting anyways. I believe it's the 20.
I closed my.
27?
For a while, so use it.
I believe it's September 27th, but don't quote me on that.
If we have anything.
What's that?
If we have something on the agenda.
This will be on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, I guess that would be it, right? The one item?
So far, that's, this would be the only thing on the September agenda.
All righty.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, go down the list then. Motion to table this to September. Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Honay is yes, and Mr. Bush?
No.
No.
Oh, boy.
Well, the motion passes to table, at least until the next meeting, which is more than likely September.
All right.
All right.
Have a night.
All right, next item, new business, ZBA 22008, public hearing, Grand Blank, Mitsubishi, applicant, 54, Sudsy, Alley Drive, signed variance. Represented, I assume that's what this means. Represented, I assume that's what this means, Allied Signs seeking variance for a sign height of 49, 14 feet, nine and a quarter, site proposed where six foot is required. All right, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Jim Fields, Allied Signs, 33650 Giftos Drive, Clinton Township. And we're seeking a height variance for a monument sign, based on the practical difficulties on the location where it is, because you're dealing with, on the site plan, where we're coming off the highways and off the road, and we're dealing with such a downgrade, that basically terms on your highway are higher than the highest point of the existing sign. This dealership has gone through a major remodel and rebranding to catch up with the current Mitsubishi standards and design. The monument sign, they do have, they want to maintain that same spot, because they want to catch people coming in off hill, so they can see where the dealership is. The dealership coming in off the northwest quadrant is blanketed out with trees, so you really don't see that parking lot. And then when you come on the other side, you've already passed it, but you're also coming in, and you see an open lot, again, you come into the blockage, where you don't see it. So really, with this, bringing the sign up, the extra eight foot, nine inches, we're not changing the actual area of the sign, to where we're not using the pylon cover as actual branding, we're still staying with the small upper box, which is similar to the existing monument sign, we're just getting it up, so maybe it helps identify where this dealership is, because you have to come off of either the two highways and the bridges to come back around on I-475, get back into the dealership itself. So it's kind of a strange spot where it is. You know, the nice thing about, when I drive up here and look, the developments are hidden back off the road, and they're blocked in with the trees, which is really good, but in this, you lose the branding, so you don't know.
All right. Anybody have any questions with the advocate at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, one quick one. Is this the only sign on the property, or is there one in the building? I can't remember. Or will there be one?
New sign package, they do have new signage going...
Be rebranded on the, like, a normal dealership?
Yeah, and that's on the...
425?
On where the entryways are off I-475.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
This is more towards the back...
This is Hill Road?
The back left side of what the dealership would be.
Okay.
So the front of the building is getting a new ACM panel, so you've got like a, they call it like a suspended gateway, so it comes up, black ACM, with a tube lighting, and then the branding is in the corners on that front. And then there's the small directional out front, which is really just a post panel sign directing where the service entrance is, to get them around to where the service base are.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, would you like to go through your report, please?
Sure. Case number 22-008 for 5470, Alley Drive, for a sign variance, Grand Blank Mitsubishi, currently zoned general commercial, parcel number 12-06676-002. Subject property is at 5470 Alley Drive, and is zoned general commercial. Subject property is approximately 4.69 acres. The zoning surrounding properties is GC, except to the east and the north, is zoned OS, office serviced, and to the west is I-475. Grand Blank Mitsubishi has an existing monument sign that conforms to the zoning ordinance. They are rebranding with all new signage, and requested for a taller monument sign. The new sign does conform to the maximum allowable square footage. Variance is for the monument sign for height, for 14.5 feet tall, where six foot is allowed. As you know, there's six requirements for granting variance, practical difficulty, unique situation, self-created, substantial justice, minimum variance necessary, and compliance with other laws. The request, the township would recommend for denial in this case based on the following items: the requested variance does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and two, the requested variance exceeds the maximum six-foot height that is allowed by the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions at this time, before I go out for public hearing? Okay. We'll go out in public then, for any comments on this case, and seeing none, I will close public comments. It's back to the board. Any comments, questions?
I have a question, and I never, I'm on Hill Road all the time, but I really don't get on 475 there very often. Can you not see the sign from 475 because of a berm?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yesterday, I drove north on I-475, past the subject property, and as you drive in 70, 80 miles an hour, you come across the viaduct underneath Hill Road, before you really see that there's a dealership there. If you turn around and come and go south, woods, major amount of woods, by the time you hit the edge of the woods, you're by the development, you don't even see it. Going west on Hill Road, as you drive by the location of the existing sign, your tires are about even with the height of the sign. So your whole car is above the existing sign. So although I appreciate the fact that this does not meet the spirit of the ordinance, this, to me, is one, at least to be looked at. The actual signage itself that says Mitsubishi Motor Cars is the same size as they're now, so they're not adding additional signage, it's just putting it up there so people can see it. So, rather or not, you know, I mean, that's not me saying I approve it, that's just making a couple statements of what you can observe driving by.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, comments?
What's across the street? I know, what's the credit union this went in?
Elga.
Elga? And the Alpha Bs, and what is it, Bob Evans? They all conform, correct?
Correct.
Speedway just got redone, right at the gas station in the corner?
Correct.
Think, some of that?
Correct.
I think one of the difficulties is, especially Mr. Thompson, is that I think you and I were on the board when we took it down from monument signs and lowered them.
So?
It's been quite a few years now, but I think, you know...
It is, it is difficult, because I would tend to agree that it is down quite a bit, grade is very low, going through there. I know the dealership is there, I go there all the time, I mean, 475, so I'm always glancing over there.
Sure.
I don't know that the sign would make any difference to me, because I'm looking for the cars. But I do appreciate your comment about the fact that where the lettering actually is, does comply. So we're looking basically at like, a pole sign, really just to rise that, to get that up to where people can see.
Yeah, basically a covered pole sign, yeah.
Right.
Is that, and we came, how did we get to the, whatever it is, 14 and a half feet? Is that something?
The 14...
Marketing?
Gets it, gets it off above that plane, but it also keeps the entire square footage of your box of sign within the ordinance. So the overall square footage of your box of sign still falls within the allowable sign ordinance, square footage of a monument sign. But instead of being lateral, we calculate that being six times 12, it's 72 feet max, we're taking it standing up.
Yeah.
So it still falls within there's the square footage, so the only variance that's being asked for is just for the height.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, like, how do we get to 14 feet? Could it be 12 feet? Could it be 10 feet? Could it be eight feet?
That's...
Is that, the applicant selected that height, and said, this is where...
We're looking at it as that would be the most effective max.
That's what, I guess that's what I'm getting to, like, so marketing...
I know what it's in here. It's back.
Anything over this, since it's now, we're on the front of the property, the six-foot makes a ton of time, totally makes sense, because you're in a pause way, and you're trying to keep your visibility down, where you're now blocking everything, keeps everything in order. This is on the backside, where we're dealing with traffic, it's such a high rate of speed, we just want to get that sign up a little bit more. This is really, this is, I see signs, to me, it's more of an elevated sign, even though it is a pole sign, it's just a directional sign to me, because all we're doing is helping you realize, hey, that is a dealership here.
So to Mr. Smith, it looks like they have several other building mounted, and other monument signs, so all of that complies, even the amount of signage, everything is in compliance, it's just strictly the height of this particular sign.
Correct. They've submitted a signed package, and I've already approved the rest of the package. The only thing that was in question was this one, the monument sign.
Thank you.
I recall, but didn't Nissan, Sierra Nissan, Holly, ask for something similar?
It was denied.
But it was a similar thing, right? They wanted a bigger monument out front to meet the new Nissan logo, or something, it was a different shape, or dimension, if I recall, that case.
It was applied for and denied, yes.
Yeah, that's what I recall, too.
And this sign, correct me if I'm wrong, this sign would follow the property, so if Mitsubishi left, the next owners could keep that sign just the way that it is.
Correct. Variances follow the property.
So is your code written where if they have to, or if they have to, they have to be permitted?
Yeah.
It has to be re-permitted, but as long as it stays within the same confines of the box, if you will, then they just have to get a permit, so we can see the context of the sign, and then, we have to issue another permit, but it doesn't have to be paid for again. But if, but if it was to be, it was granted at 14 and a half, and they brought it down to 10, let's say the new, a new owner did, they would have to pull a new permit for it, but it would be, it would be reducing the non-conformity, if you will, so we wouldn't make them come back for a variance, no.
We've seen a lot of places, too, where you grant, you grant special variance, use variance for one element, you tie it to, these services, and it's gone.
No, this one stays with the property. Yep.
So you don't have conditional variances?
We, we do, but not in this case, right, Mr. Laddie?
Yeah, we don't grant use variances in our ordinance, first of all. Secondly, so this is a dimensional variance, right? And so the, so the criteria is that, is a practical difficulty. Practical difficulty is you can't see this property or the signage on this property because of the, because of the grade. That's going to be the case, no matter who's there. And so that's, that would be the criteria that they're using to decide this.
Mr. Bush?
I was just going to make a comment, looking at my zoning ordinance, we did approve a variance on September 27 of '21 for a sign. It was not height, it was closer to the right of way than 10 feet. That was the Kroger, and that was approved. Like, that doesn't have anything to do with it, which, we did approve a sign variance, it just wasn't height.
Yes.
Just to piggyback off that, on Mr. Bush's comment, that was due to utilities being where the sign wanted, where the applicant wanted the sign to be, so that was the only spot where myself and the DPW, Mr. Sears, figured that it could be...
To avoid existing...
To avoid existing utilities, yes.
She says your fault.
Thank you.
That's funny.
Just trying to clarify.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
What's the number of this? 22 what?
This one? This is 22-008.
Wait. I guess, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, then, to deny zoning case 22-008, we're seeking a height variance.
Okay. Do we have support? I'll support. We've got a motion to deny from Mr. Thompson, supported by Mr. Hone. Any additional discussion before we take a vote?
Yeah, can we have some discussion about the criteria, and what you feel doesn't meet the criteria? Is it practical difficulty? Is it, do you feel it's self-created? Do you feel that it's not the minimum variance necessary? What are some of your thoughts on that?
I guess I'm, I guess I agree with Mr. Smith, is that, you know, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and it's always kind of been a dealership on that corner, as far as I can remember, and I've never had a problem knowing it was there. But, again, there are a lot of monument signs out there, all the new buildings across the street have been all redone, and they all meet the current ordinance, I think.
So that would go to, there's nothing unique about that property, as far as, as far as the elevation goes, or the practical difficulty, and then you're pointing out the fact that it was, I think it was built as a dealership.
It was originally, if I recall, it was at Farr?
Yep.
Something like that.
Our superstar.
Long time ago. Yeah.
So its site issues aren't necessarily unique to that property, it's shared by other properties in the area, in the vicinity of I-475 and Hill Road. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to understand the analysis with those criteria, and thank you for that.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, motion to deny, Mr. White?
A yes denies?
Yes.
Correct. It's a double negative.
It's a double negative. No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hone is yes, and Mr. Bush?
Really?
Yeah.
That's what you came for.
All right. Motion to deny was passed.
You want to resubmit? I'll take a look at it.
I think it's kind of one of those things with ags, and they really don't want to try to be on the backside. They kind of want to stay where it was, to do what you said. You know, it's always been that, but when they advertise to people that have come through the buying Mitsubishi, they may not know, especially when car lots are the way they are. So, you know, I can get where they're coming from, like, I...
Right. I guess my argument, that would be, is everybody's got GPS in their pocket now, so if you're looking for something, you just plug it in. If you're coming from somewhere...
That's funny, because I've actually been to variance meetings, but that was how they deny directional signage.
Really? Was it GPS?
At the meeting, when they denied the directional signage, there was a wreck out there, and they brought it right back to court board. And they use that to allow better signage marking, because they said your comments were off-base and created this problem of traffic, so now we need to correct it.
Oh, Jesus.
It's kind of funny, but we said against that, and I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
All right, next item on the Agendas Committee reports. Any other things? Anything fun?
Nothing, that's why we're going to be canceling the August meeting, so we have no cases, and also worked out, Mr. Attorney Laddie's not going to be here as well, so I will reconfirm with the, I want to get back to my desk, and I will let you know when the September meeting is, but I believe it is the 27th. Don't quote me on that.
It is, according to my calendar.
Is it? Okay, thank you.
Can you, could you make a note, too? I will be out of state in September, or that week of September, so...
Okay, me too.
It will need to be an alternate for me. I don't really get, I only get calls the day of, which is often inconvenient, I feel like, like, maybe, department could contact like, a week out, not at 12:30, on the day of, because I don't know how they, if they don't know...
I mean, the schedule's put out, I mean, you've got the schedule.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, we get calls to confirm that if we're coming.
Oh, yeah. I got mine yesterday.
But it's...
Well, you and I talked the day before, that's when you confirmed, I called you this, I called everybody at the same time, so I mean...
Damn good thing they got a good alternate here.
Are you the only one now? Are you the only one left?
Yes, I've been trying to get another alternate, but we have not succeeded yet.
That's good, it's so much fun that you guys...
Any other discussions, then? If not, have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Mr. Thompson, supported by Mr. Bush. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
If not, at the same time, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.